Takes keeping the actions they see.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on our agenda tonight is 6:30 PM public hearing on the annual updates to our general assistance ordinance. And as an overview, the state has published the updated dependencies for general assistance. This is a housekeeping item. The council is required by state law to adopt the ordinance and the appendices each year. These dependencies include appendix A, overall maximums for income have increased approximately 5%. Appendix B, food maximum, food maximums have increased approximately 12%. Appendix C, housing minimums have increased approximately 8%. Appendix D, utilities maximums have increased approximately 40%. Appendix E, heating fuel maximums have remained the same, figured by gallons and not the dollar amount. Appendix F, personal care and household supplies have remained the same. Appendix G, mileage rate, stated main travel expense reimbursement rate is set by the obstacle state controller is 46 cents per mile. 2022 to 2023 GA housing maximums recovery residences have increased approximately 8%. Is there anybody present tonight that would like to speak for or against this or would like additional information on this? Is there anybody who is tuning in via video who has any questions or comments? Mr. Manager, do you have any?
Oh, exactly what you said, Mr. Vice Chair. Just these are standard dependencies that the federal government requires us to adopt and then then enforce annually through council adoption.
Thank you. Does the council have any comments, questions, or? Okay, if there's no others, I'll close the public hearing. Town council is following the public hearing, just as a housekeeping item. We have a forum. We have a majority of the council present, myself, councillors, Seer and Minahan. And but any action of the council takes this evening must be unanimous vote. Because it's a majority of the council, not the majority present. Okay. Approval of the following minutes, town council of September 27, 2022.
That jumped up to me.
Motion be in order to to adopt the minutes. Your motion is second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Not opposed, that motion passes three zero. Board of assessors from September 27, 2022.
Mr. Vice Chair, motion that we move to accept the board of assessors minutes for September 27, 2022 is written.
So.
Any discussion on that item? Okay, call for vote. All those in favor of adopting the board of assessors of September 27, 2022 as written, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Not opposed, that motion passes three zero. Signing of the treasurer's warrant. We have a warrant in front of us tonight for $1,148,184.60 dated 10/6/2022.
Just trying to make a motion that we sign the warrant dated October 6, 2022 in the amount of $1,148,184.60.
Second.
Thank you. Motion second, any discussion on the warrant?
It does include the school payment, I'm sorry.
There's no other discussion. All those in favor of signing the treasurer's warrant? As moved, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes three zero. Not opposed. Our reports and presentations, do we have any this evening? No. Public comment, are there any members of the public that wish to speak on any items that are not on the agenda? Recognize, Mr. Clary?
Yes, Mr. Clary can explain so. I thought I know probably not this year, but I was wondering if the council in the future could look at some signage on our town. You go to North Berwick, you go to Berwick, may surround the towns. And sometime you have welcome, welcome to Berwick, welcome to North Berwick, we have nothing. And when it comes to Christmas time, we have woodpeckers on our telephone poles. And they've been there a long while. And I don't see how they're even seasonal. So this just goes to thought and probably for next year's budget, I'll approach again, that might consider. I mean, Sobo has these, they put them up, nothing else in town has something to do with it, you know. But the poles belong to South Berwick and a little beefing up of holidays, like get rid of those woodpeckers, they've been there too long.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Please.
Look, I actually had a meeting last night with Sobo Central about set flags. I have one that we're going to look at selling them off to replace them. It's not 100% yet. I still have to go through a few details with my committee and whatnot, but it's on our radar.
Oh, thank you very much. Been too long. Three fifteen years.
I was looking at North Berwick's and Berwick's flags myself, if that makes you feel any better.
It does.
Mr. Manager.
Cliff, just just so you know, and for Diane, for the rest of council. That is on our list of when we create a downtown Tiff district is Christmas decoration, but I think we can do a lot.
Don't use the word Christmas.
Just don't tolerate.
It's your holiday decoration.
Let him speak uninterrupted, please.
Please, I'm sorry.
And but it is on our list. It's part of it's part of what can be funded for if we put it into the Tiff, the taxes from our finance district. So we are looking at that and that would be, that's on our goal, is it in years to come, even if we start small and buy more pieces each year to enhance our holiday decoration. That, that, that's about holiday.
Mr. Forty, I believe you had to hand up.
Audrey Forty, where we are owed. Vice Chairman Correca. I'd like to thank you. I know your term of office is expiring. And I would sincerely like to thank you for all the hours that you have spent sitting in that chair. Going to events, they, if you added up those hours, it would be, I didn't even try, it would be scary. And I really want to thank you for your dedication to the town of South Berwick, for your expertise. As a sometimes critic, we have been adversaries at different times, but you've always been working in the interest of the town of South Berwick and the hours that you've spent have been countless. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you for the kind words. Anyone from the, Pat Robinson, I think you muted that. Pat, you muted.
Yes, I had to find my cursor. I'm mute. Pat Robinson, Brattle Street. I'm talking with my Sobo Central hat on, my Keep South Berwick Warm hat. Just to let people know that Soup Suffer is coming back in person and takeout November 2nd, Wednesday, from 5 to 7 at Spring Hill Restaurant. Actually, it's not a restaurant, it's a banquet hall. Generously donated by Rosalie Scharf and the crew there. It's it's for people who don't know what it is, it's for a donation. I generally expect like a $5 to $10 per person, 25 for a family. You get homemade soups from a few of the businesses and lots of individuals. Bread from When Pigs Fly and homemade cookies from individuals and perhaps a couple of businesses. It's from 5 to 7. And it's a fun event. It's a community event and we raise money for Keep South Berwick Warm, Program of Sobo Central, which goes to help people with their fuel costs. People who are struggling on this year might be a big year because fuel cost is so high. They, these people have to go to general assistance and and from there, general assistance helps them out. So we hope to see you there. Thank you. What?
A question. I didn't catch the time.
Oh, 5 to 7. Five, five in the afternoon till 7. Oh, and the other thing is if anyone wants to make a soup or make cookies or volunteer at the event, if they go to sobocentral.org, there is a signup genius listing there. You can click on that and sign up.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I'm doing, I was just to make a public comment on some item that's not on the agenda. Okay. Thank you. So we have a go to unfinished business. Item number one, zoning ordinance solar farms. We have a submission by the planning board with a cover letter from the town planner. And let's see.
Page seven.
Sliding back, I didn't, I went, I didn't know if I would need additional backup information on the GA. Yeah. Yes. Mr. Manager.
Yeah, so this is presented to us and all I'm doing is presenting it formally to the council tonight. Not for any action, just to give it to you. So at this point from here on out, I ask if you take this document, review it, mock it up, see what your changes would be, if there are any. And then a later date, put it on the agenda or the agenda right.
Are there any members of the public that wish to talk on the comment on the draft solar ordinance? Okay, I'll throw it over to the council. Any questions or comments from the council?
Just of an initial review, there was an acronym kind of placed in there, MSDS, which wasn't defined and was on page 11 of the supporting documents under G, air layer protection. It's once a solar panel type is determined, a current MSDS sheet, I'm sure that's probably an industry term, but as a layperson, I don't know what that means.
I think in terms of material safety data sheet for hazardous chemical, hazardous materials.
It's on the supporting documents, it's on of ordinance, yeah, not my ordinance page, it's on like page four. Yeah. Actually, it should be SDF sheet. So it could just be defined or. Other than that, the setbacks that we took before seem fine to me and I was appreciative of the many needed species to be used just as a coverage.
I dove into it, I went and looked at the map of the I have on nine two zones and looked at the tax maps and looked at the the actual properties that would be potentials. So, but I can bring that up, that's when we discuss it at greater length, but overall, I was just very impressed with right up the whole whole ordinance and whatnot. It was very well written. So that goes to be a quick quick go to course.
I do want to comment on the time that the plan, the planning board put in, making that document.
I noted in the cover letter that it references a final draft zoning ordinance section 140 to 67.2 performance standards. Has the planning board held a public hearing on this issue?
I don't know that. I'd have to ask. I don't believe, I don't believe, I don't believe so. I think that's required. Right. I think they wanted to get it to you for any final changes.
That was what I was wondering about.
I think, I think it had to come to you. Then you guys would make any final changes, kick it back then, if you approved it, then they'll send it to they'll send it to a public hearing.
I would say that probably we'd call for a workshop with the council when we're available to be able to bat around and have Mallory Jones' comments as well. I guess I just want to review, I know we did this before.
Talking to the planner, he said it was ready for your final review to put it on your agenda for discussion. So do you want to put it on your next meeting on the 25th as an agenda item for discussion? Or do you want to do a workshop on it? Or?
I think a workshop would be, would be appropriate because it's targeted and we can get through it and again, I don't know if there's going to be substantive discussion or not. It's going to take a lot of time, that council move, and whether we better serve to have an hour or four. I don't know. I guess I don't have a good feel for what the what the council feels in terms of what we need for time. Yeah. If the agenda on the 25th is not.
It's the other goal right now, but if you want to move it along, but if not, we can do a workshop, we'll do a workshop at a later date and move it that way.
Yeah, so I think it's just a function of how much time we're going to need to do that. We really don't have Mallory and John's opinion on that at this point.
Yeah. My only concern is the, if we do a workshop, where does that kick it down to before we can actually get it to?
So if you do, if you do another workshop and there's any changes, then I'll have to back to the planning board.
Yeah.
So they'll, they'll go back to them one final time, they'll make the changes, then kick it back to you for final reading and final adoption or.
They would have to go, at that point, there might be some discussion back and forth if there if there's a nits and nats, then they can make, you know, typos and commas and things like that, but if there's like a you know, I've got to have from the planning board's point of view, our staff's point of view, then that might require some back and forth, but. But they both, they both need a public hearing, so.
They want to have tentative approval from the council before they do the public hearing.
And are we in a, we're under a current moratorium, correct?
No, it's, we are.
March, okay.
Yeah, we shouldn't dally though.
Right, right.
No, I agree. I think we should move and, you know, early November, if we're going to do a workshop, I'll see what the planning board's schedule is. Okay.
Barbara had asked me if you were talking about public hearing, the student kindly refrained from celebrating one for November 15. They got that before coming.
31st is on a Monday of October. I think that that falls in between. I don't think that's a regular hearing date.
I just have this one.
The 15th is when elected officials need to be sworn in by 15.
15 is a council meeting anyway.
That's the first meeting of November.
Right, that's the first council meeting.
That was the reason, Jeff, is because you were having members sworn in.
Didn't we take an action not to have a meeting on election day?
Right.
So that defers that, kicks it down. Okay.
And
Well, why don't we do it this way then? The pending comments by the chair and councillor James, get their feel and if if they feel as though we can get it done on the 25th, we'll do so. And if they're willing to, you know, rather have a workshop, then I'm kind of ambivalent one way or the other on it. It's just a question of time.
Right, we put it as a, we put it as an agenda item on the 25th agenda and and discuss it there, we could kick it to a workshop. The earliest workshop we're going to have is the 22nd and remember anyway.
Yeah, so why don't we do that? Why don't we put it on the agenda for the 25th? Because we have something going on in the 18th.
Yeah.
So let's do that and then it could be a a quick one to say, okay, we have too much to talk about here. We don't want to take it as a meeting to kick it down, or we can take whatever time we need. We just don't want to be hit them at 10 o'clock. The solar. That's just my view.
So you have to try this to clarify, you're going to set this on the agenda for the 25th?
Not a public hearing.
Just go back on the agenda.
It's just an agenda item. It'll be continuation of unfinished business. That's, we agree on that?
That makes sense.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for your help on that. Yeah, my comment was, you know, on the public hearing, are we waiting to talk council comments? So it's kind of, kind of both. You already talked to the chairman. Yeah. Okay. Okay, if that's it, we'll move on to new business, action on general assistance ordinance, recommendation. Okay. Yeah, okay, this is the suggested motion on, overall page 17.
Mr. Vice Chair, motion to adopt the MMA general assistance ordinance and the updated dependencies A through G and the general assistance housing maximums for recovery residences effective October 1, 2022.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all was in favor of the motion to adopt the revised update, updated dependencies to the general assistance, so they say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There's none opposed to that. That motion passes three zero. Set a public hearing date for the election referendum questions. Did you want to speak to that?
Clary. Given this project, there's a lot of unknowns going on. There's unknown, how much tax revenue if it passed, the town would lose. How much insurance for liability of the town would have to pay for this land if they turn it back to the town? And $250,000 of taxpayer money could go into our town hall repairs. And I think that's basically what I got to say, but conservation fantastic with this project here, the town has to take liability of it. I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Audrey, I think you had your hand up.
Yes. Audrey Forty, where you wrote, my questions are similar in discussion with various people that I've spoken to about this because I believe firmly, Will Rogers, he's my favorite philosopher, said one time, by land, they ain't making any more of it. And this is an off, a one time, a one off, a one time opportunity, it will never come up again. I took a tour a couple of weeks ago with my cousin up river from Portsmouth to Dover on the Chico. And because I grew up on the river in Elliot and it's, I will not go again, it's a landscape of the past. If you cross the Dover Elliot Bridge and look up river, it's a very unique landscape. And I'm not usually big on spending a lot of money for the town, but it's, as I said, a very unique opportunity that will never come up again. My big question is, I was quite surprised when there were two items on the ballot pertinent to this issue. One was, would the town put some serious money toward the project to get the Great Works Land Trust some credibility when they apply for their grants and wherever the money comes from, I don't know. But the second question, would the town receive it as a gift? I don't understand that. And what would happen if item one got approved and the second referendum question got voted down? I'm unclear on that. I don't know if you can or would answer the question today. It would be, I'd ask the same question at a public hearing because I've heard people ask the same question myself. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Audrey.
Can I go for a call on something?
Well, I don't want to get into rebuttal.
No, it's not really, really about this. It's just about general things the town would like to see people know.
Okay, I want to check and see if anybody else would like to speak to this first and then we'll come back to you. Anybody tuning in that wanted to speak about specifically, our action tonight is to set a public hearing and and not really to discuss the pros and cons of the of the question, because the public hearing is going to reveal other things that, you know, for the public, you know, for total disclosure. So really, I'd like to stick to the agenda item, which is to set a public hearing on October 25th. Anybody in the public that wishes to speak? Okay. All right, Cliff? Oh, Pat, you just raised your hand late.
I was just going to say, if you're going to set a public hearing, I'll wait for that because I was going to kind of rebut Cliff's comments. So I'll wait till the public hearing.
Again, it's the comment and that sort of thing, so. But we recognize.
With the situation with people today that don't get newspapers and stuff, and when I was the council, we had the Portless, Portless Press Herald here, and we had Fosse, and the word got out to the whole town about situations. Very few people actually even know about this project in town, and maybe a project like this, maybe the town has bite the bullet and put out mailing to every person, taxpayer, and give them details on what the plans are. And I know it's expensive, but like I say, and maybe people throw that in the trash, but people are busy with their home lives, and I mean, we had council meetings that we had upstairs to sometimes, and today, who do you see? I, so that's not just down this project, this is anything the town wants to do. A letter stamp saying, want to do this, what's it cost, and just give an idea that, come to a meeting, thank you.
Okay, thank you, we'll bring it back to the council now.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes.
Motion to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, at six thirty P M to receive comment on this November eighth.
Second, give the motion a second, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Right.
Aye. Motion passes three zero. Okay, thank you, Halloween parade, any members of the public who should speak on the Halloween parade? Just manager, do you have anything you want to talk about?
Well, because this is a parade, and South Berwick really never done this before, but because it's a parade, the only ones who have the authority in the state of main four roads, besides emergency services or councils and, and governments, so in order to do this parade, you'll have to approve a motion to allow them to hold this and to close the roads for the times they've identified in Main Street, you have that for the road.
Yes, yeah, that's right on here, they're gonna start at the community center on Norton Street at five thirty P M, and it'll end at Central School on Main Street, the trigger.
I just need a motion to approve that, that's all, and then we'll notify D O T and.
Yeah, there's, there's also been some fairly long standing additional detours, you know, because the Halloween parade is longstanding and, you know, with the disease going around, it's truncated, but we're back at it again, and, but like, like on neighborhood that I live in, which would include Neely Street, Butler Street, Young Street, and Streets, Soul Road, those have been, I don't know if it was formal or not, but they were, they were, they were closed, because it's, from my point of view, it's, it's a lot of fun seeing the street full of kids. And, and it's, and the police department, you know, cruises around, and, you know, they, they keep order, so I perhaps talk with Chief Hamel, not Chief Hamel, Chief Rupert, about what, what they do, and as far as, because I don't know what formal acts you're taking, whether it was ad hoc or not, just to do that, I don't know.
Yeah, it was, we talked about this point at the time, and they, so they're not gonna do any of that, they're just doing this this year, they're not closing off any of the other roads, just us.
Okay.
The police will be traveling around all the different side streets and passing out candy and be a part of this.
Yeah.
Just not gonna barricade off the roads.
Okay.
Mr. Vice Chair, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, so if this is the first time that we're doing this, I know that we technically had like a holiday or Christmas parade after Thanksgiving, is this something we need to consider?
No parades can be, no one has any authority to close down roads, except unless we're going to emergency services, in the times of emergency situation, conditions, or at times once approved by the body of the council or slightly.
And so this would fall into place for also the memorial, the Memorial Day kind of celebration going forward.
We didn't do it then, because they didn't close the road down, they kept one lane open, so we didn't do it then, but in this particular case, it called actually closing the road. So when you're actually in the field to follow traffic, we have to, you have to, by council, and we have to notify D O T, and that's posted on the website, or if it was posted on one. I know this could like.
Thank you.
All right, so just do that request of action there.
Yeah.
Just a challenge, a motion that council grant permission for the police to close the road for the Halloween parade.
I guess as stated. Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
And then ready to make another one of the D O T?
No, no, that's all, we'll just, it's just an administrative thing, I just need to call down where it was authorized and, and closing the road, that's all.
Okay. There's no other discussion, we'll call for vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, there's none opposed.
Mr. Vice Chair, I just wanted to make enough, I really don't think it's a big thing, but it's, it's more of a, I think it's probably, it's a best I can figure, it's kind of a procedural liability thing, it should have been being done, you know, all the way around.
Yeah.
That's all.
Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is looks like a task force. Joint team for the consideration of upcoming townwide ordinance changes. The joint team would consist of two planning board members, town councillors, and representative from the comprehensive plan committee. This is initiated by the planning board, so what we have coming up are ordinances coming out of state mandates for L D two thousand and three, and and then low impact development as required by N S four. Council wishes.
I think it makes sense, we got a lot of moving parts going on here. We're just, we're just authorized with creation.
Yeah, this is, this is an ad hoc committee's way I read it, and there's really no statutory authority granted or anything like that, it's, it's just basically an agreement to to meet and to work and move. Yeah. And to move the project forward, yeah.
Yeah, I think it makes a lot of sense, I think it was good with Tammy on board, the knowledge she has, and then just a lot of things happening here, as well as on the comprehensive plan group, and then planning board, there's all so many things happening, and each makes sense to kind of have a smaller group circle up and.
Yeah, there's a lot of things like, like for example, L D two thousand and three, no one has mentioned anything that I have heard on the state level, local level, on Blackwood. People can convert a garage and sit in on the property line, now, instead of being a garage, which is basically occupied by a vehicle, you have dwelling there. Now, what about structure fires, now you have something with fuel, you know, propane, oil, whatever, on the property line, and it's the houses are close to each other. Like what happened, I don't know if you followed what, what happened down on Webster Street, but that went off at the corner of Grant and Webster, that closed by to the next house. And it torched the side of that house, and so that could be, that could have been a concentration much more than the loss of the building in question, so, I mean, that's something that I just, and then you get into, you know, all these other things, and I'm not a fireperson, I'm, I'm just someone who thinks about things with, you know, hardwired smoke detectors, that you would do in any multifamily dwelling, and, you know, you'd have those, not just giving alarms inside the house, but you'd be calling somebody, you know, one of those things goes off, like in a apartment building, you know, the red trucks are coming. And, and we haven't talked about that at all, and I don't even know, think that the state considered that, in terms of like a densely populated neighborhood like Perrin Street.
And Mr. Vice Chair, hey, that's one of the things Tammy brought up when she talked to us, you know, the, the future, futuristic look of this is it's gonna come, and if we don't grab it and harness it and prepare for it, plan for it, it's gonna, it's gonna be here next summer for us to try to deal with. So the planner's idea was, talking with the planning board, was to put together a joint working group, they can start to look into some of these questions, get going on it, because before you know it, winter will turn to spring, then we'll be facing a deadline, so.
I, I, I feel so strongly about this particular law, that I would, as a town, it's not gonna be my call in a month I'm gone. But I, I would think that we could even take an action to say, we'll acknowledge the state law, and for these reasons, we're ignoring it. And, and, and you can do that, we did on the zoning board of appeals, we, we, there was a situation that came up, can't remember exactly what it was, but we departed from what was written down, you do this, you don't do this every day. But there was a situation that came up where the rules just didn't make sense, we acknowledged the rules, it was challenged, but by the fact that we acknowledged the rule, but then did something different, the judge said, you're okay. So, I, you know, I think we have to put on, you know, some common sense here a little bit, you know, if, if something doesn't make sense to us on the ground here in our town, that we should, you know, do what we can to take care of business, and, and they could say, well, do this, do that, but we could say, well, no, thank you. And then it gets dragged out through the course of three years, so, so be it, anyway, that's just Jack.
Yeah. Do we have to make a motion?
I was gonna have a party shout out.
No, 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 I just, I just wanted to get, we'll, we'll, you know, when you have a full council, we'll ask the council to appoint two members to the committee.
Okay, yeah, it's a good idea, get people talking to each other.
And again, also just very, it's a lot in this, this letter from Tammy, you know, there's a lot there as to what the reasoning behind it, but very well written, and we're breaking it down so that we know what the heck, what, what she's asking, and, and, you know, it's, it's good to have the details, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to, to that.
Yeah, the only thing that I would think, on the second paragraph, or actually the third paragraph, is list a couple of examples, but you know, you know, it would be including what I alluded to, those two things, because, you know, we just talked about solar, and that's, you know, coming along too, so. Any objection to hearing a comment from, you know, any to this time?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know that. It, Audrey forty, a rodeo, if you were going to appoint, if the council was going to appoint a couple of members to the ad hoc team, I would suggest that you consider that some from the more intensely populated areas and some from the more rural, because what, what would work out my way wouldn't work where you live, so, different points of view.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna move on to new business number five, Home for the Holidays tree, Mr. Minahan, I believe you had some dealing with that last year, is that correct?
Last year.
Yeah.
Mr. Vice Chair, I actually put that on the agenda for tonight, so I'll stand, and what I'm pretty much asking is to do the same thing as last year, use the front lawn for a town hall, because it's next to a war memorial. Have a tree, whether it be with Mary Huddy and her tree, or whether it be ours for Osgood, but it was like permission to use the front lawn.
Okay, how did it go last year?
It was great.
Yeah.
Yeah, everyone had fun, and I think it was a great turnout.
No, I'm talking about the tree.
Oh, I think it was great, personally.
Perfect.
Yep, Jeff and Dave Stanfield bought their boots and went out to Osgood's Field and got a nice tree, and we lit it up, and it was great, we kind of.
Then on Blackberry Hill Road?
Uh, workshop.
Workshop, okay.
Johnny James, Tyann and I were out there in the breeze, trying to get it up straight, and it was, it was a fun experience.
Experience, yes, that, that's the right way to put it.
So was that your one and only tree, is that, is that your one and only tree?
That's my one and only tree, yeah.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah. Nah, I was a little busy this year, so.
Okay, so what actually, what actually do we have here now? Approve the use of the town hall lawn and electricity for the holiday tree, December second, two thousand twenty two.
And I'll make that the motion to approve the use of the town hall lawn and electricity for the holiday tree beginning December second.
Yeah.
I think we went for a week, or two weeks, I hear, remember.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that was a couple of weeks.
I think it was a couple of weeks, just to enjoy it.
Yeah.
Give a motion a second, any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all was in favor of use of the town hall lawn and electricity for the holiday tree, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero. Okay, we have a, an odd item on the agenda tonight, and, and we have a traffic complaint.
I just, I, I get so many of these, and this particular one, she addressed it to me, was trying to address it to the council, it's just a forward for information, it's just an FYI, I just want you to hear them. People, in particular, several people called me up and said, you know, we're tired of this, we want something done about this, and I said, then you gotta pass it on to the town council, the town council has to hear this, not men, just the men, you're sitting in my office, Monday through Friday, the power was to be here in this municipality of town council, so, I'm just passing it on, it's just for information, that's all.
Okay, but, you know, I acted on it, because I, I drive that way sometimes, and, and so I crept up to the intersection of Main Street and Norton, and I rather like the, the crosshatching that we have right there now, I think it works, I think it's effective, and, so I guess I'd politely disagree with the, with the petitioner, if you want to call that, or the writer, because it's I didn't have a problem, I guess, with, with site distance.
Mr. Vice Chair, and I, I got a complete similar to that section about the vehicle that parks to the right in front of that house, blocking the view of being able to pull out, they, they are constantly parked on the side of the road, blocking views, that was why we seemed.
Where is this? Traffic, where, where is this, Main Street and somewhere?
Norton.
Oh, Norton. Oh, yeah.
For those listening in, the, the complaint that was forwarded to us tonight was comments on difficulty merging on the Main Street from Norton Street.
This is a, this is the same, part of the same area that we'll be discussing with Savador Tech.
Yes, it's on track, so.
I did forward the complaint.
Okay, that's the other way, we're forwarding the complaints onward to them too, ones of danger, and I can't, ones in the back country roads, I don't.
Right, yeah. Well, I'll, I'll make another comment, I, I know this has been repeated by individuals, because, you know, I, I mentioned that I wished I had a silver bullet to solve the traffic problems in South Berwick, but we are in fact, you know, victimized by our geography, and we have two state highways coming through town, and it gets busy, I mean, I could have wrote a letter to the manager about trying to get across the road from the Sarah Warren Jewett House to go to nature's way, or even getting out of my car on that side of the road and waiting because people are zipping by, this is a, this is a fact of life in South Berwick these days, and I'm afraid that we're, we're ill equipped to, to to, to respond to these sorts of things, because it's, it is simply a fact of life, and. And I wish that I could solve the bypass traffic that go by my house in the morning, commuting time in the afternoon from. You know, three thirty to five thirty. You can go around the corner on two two wheels almost, it seems, and, uh. Gotta keep your head on its level to make sure you don't get whacked.
I think, and to add to that too, is, uh. You know, it's, you know, even as like a public service announcement, a call for. Which I know some of us have been doing for this, uh, traffic workshop. For the public to come out and and bring these up to Savador Techniques. Because things like this, like you said, you you had to go deliberately to go. Check it out when you drive, you know, and and you're not seeing that every day. I see it a lot, but I'm in a bigger truck, so I could see how it could be a problem for. Someone in a smaller vehicle, but my perspective is high. So, um, I think it's, um. I think it's really, it's good to have the the complaint to the, these brought up. Especially now because we have an actual. Crew and team put together, working to strategize and think about this very sort of thing. You know, the request to wipe out some parking spots might sound great to some, but we actually have experts. That wanna hear this, and now they can hear this exact example. And make, and kind of look and see, oh, that is a potential problem area and, um. Hopefully, address it while addressing the larger issue that they're looking at, so. Yeah, just I guess all of that to say to anybody that might listen now and in the future is. Come on down to the workshop and let us know about your individual issues, so they can have true data to work with.
Question? Is that another two hour parking spot area? They don't. And I could a lot are not moving. From the stores.
Mr. Red chair, is there, um, sorry, you mentioned that there was a.
Geez, we let you slip way to the barn here.
Best place to be.
I didn't have a sense that we were missing something up top.
Well, there are times where the public comes in to hear something, so I wanted to let them have the opportunity first. I have to sit through all my. All my stuff, and then if there was something to discuss, I figured it's definitely leaving easier.
You have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, for the highway to pound of the water lines have been updated at Front Street and Spring Street, finally. Uh, we're hoping that it would get done before winter, they did, and finally they're gonna be scheduled to pay on Friday, whether permitting. They're still cleaning up the storm drains. Um, they're repairing a basin on Willow Street this week. And winterization on the sprinkler systems of the field with the monuments will be completed by the end of the week. Police bomb in the last two weeks, they've had four arrests, nine accidents, sixty-seven traffic stops, of which twenty were on Golden Street. Detective Siding Stevens will be holding a fraud training at the community center for seniors. Officer Arsenal has become the new firearms instructor, and he's done a train. With our staff and has done an excellent job this year of instructing mandated annual firearms class. School resource officer McCloud is doing an incredible job. Shemashra High School has been very busy dealing with students being back in school. Um, the police station will be attempting the windows on the first floor to stay in compliance with the Privacy Protection Act. What they discovered was. Someone walks up to the building, they can actually go through the windows and see their computer screens, and that's, that's an illegal. Thing, that's, so that they're getting someone to come in and check the windows. Fire Department, the last two weeks had eighteen calls. He added eight of three hundred and twenty-three calls, up about forty-two calls from last year. Brad Gorman has been promoted to the position of fire lieutenant, effective one ten one. Uh, there was five candidates that went through a promotional process, and he was the one who scored the highest, so congratulations to Brad. Uh, Fire Direction Week is with this week, they'll be hosting students from Central School, conducting fire drills at the schools, and visiting local day kids. Well, if you see the fire department out and around, that's what they're doing. Code enforcement, the last two weeks, two building permits, twenty-three building inspections, three violation letters. Two pre-construction meetings with developers, two trainings, stormwater chimneys, recertification, one and a half. Um, reviewed two past subdivision site plans for. Site plan review and had a meeting with the zoning board of appeals. Cannabis policy and licensing application are being addressed, is working on that. Great Hill Road by Watts subdivision preliminary plans have been approved. Density calculation will be interviewed in the soil types of Great Hill Road. Community question and concern with being addressed on that project. One tribute, definition of language and suggestions made from board meetings, uh, being interpreted. Berwick Academy for those projects are under review. Uh, new guidance has been received from SMPDC on LD two thousand and three, will be sharing with all committees shortly. Reviewing land use ordinance for compliance with white paper on erosion and sedimentation. Ordinance changes due to be effective one July twenty twenty-three. An annual stormwater inspection being accomplished over the last two weeks. Library, uh, generally will be meeting with revision of goals, or why don't you go ahead and talk about them?
When I was reviewing the checker and I saw CMP and I always like to look at the library with the solar and how much we're gaining on the. Excuse me, the solar array versus are being built. My parents have had solar panels for about a year or so now, and I just recently got them, so I'm understanding a little more about them. So when I see that at my own house, I'm bringing in sixty kilowatts in one day. And the library can't make a thousand in a month, and they have a hundred and forty-four panels. So I'm I'm working with revision, I've I've talked to Lee, we're gonna set up an appointment, they're gonna come in. They're gonna show us, um, how the system works at the library. They're gonna get us set up with an app so that we can verify that the solar panels and the array is working properly. And we're gonna see if there's any repairs that may have to happen to make sure that it is at its fullest capacity. So, trying to save some money up there.
Very good. Very good. Thank you.
Recreation, the new programming coordinator, um, is working, is hired, started, she's gonna be starting in Coyote Club. Coyote Club. Go ahead.
Uh, the Coyote Club is an after-school club for children geared towards the outdoors. My children participated in it, so they learned how to light fires. Primitive cooking skills, so on and so forth.
So she's gonna be doing that here. Uh, mad science has started back up after school program. Um, they're also working on setting up classes for Zumba yoga and art, setting up the speed programs for winter months. For the seniors, um, on October third, fifty seniors went on a, went on a Pasaki foliage cruise. And they had a good time. Uh, next week they'll be closed for cleaning and waxing of the floors, the floors haven't been done. At the senior over at the center for a while, so we're gonna get done. Under assessing, continuing to receive property tax stabilization applications. She finished the tree growth roster. Uh, she's doing reporting of sales to the state for the new ratio for next year. And deeds are nearly caught up, will be qualifying sales for. Sale by analyzing listings, sending out questionnaires, and visiting properties to verify data. Down clerk has had over five hundred absentee requests received already mailed back out, correct?
They're still coming in.
I know you guys have been really busy and online and been open door. Good job there. Transfer station, uh, the new dumpster that we ordered, the canister, finally arrived. Uh, we had to order that back this summer on capital, on capital funds. We dropped strings bags that we wouldn't have arrived, um, Dan hasn't had a chance to open them up and see if they look like cats. Strung them, but as I said, we had to order a drop string, we can't get the ties anymore, the company said we can't do that. Uh, we had one of our part-time people resign, so we're looking for one part-time help position. Um, Dan added a new bin for donations. Um, and the bin is basically specifically holding in funds for veterans. Some people can, we have the one for goodwill, but this one specifically is a veteran stuff. Dan, that was somebody that said that up. Economic development, she Denise now with the town attorney regarding the new TIF districts. Now with SMPDC to continue working together on mapping, which will end in a complaint. Uh, getting account access to as many grants as she can find.
So I was talking with Heather, uh, this, she reported to us that we only have, uh, six homes that are at risk of foreclosure for this year. Which typically it's seventeen to twenty-five, so this is the lowest it's been in many, many years. Um, so the letters, uh, will be going out to those people by the end of October, and then they still have some time. They won't foreclose on until December. Um, I'm still working with the auditor, finalizing some questions and getting, helping him get reports finalized for his review to you guys in December. Um, I have reached out to Kennebunk Savings Bank to discuss interest earnings. The interest rates are going up everywhere. So I feel our revenue should be as well when it comes to the interest rates. So if they really reduce them at the beginning of COVID, so I'm hoping to rent them back. So save money at the library. And I have been spending a lot of time with Denise, um, and talking about TIFs, learning about the TIFs, uh, learning the financial impacts. Of them, um, you know, kind of working with her as to what is the best way with the lawyers, town lawyers, what is the best way to capture? The most bankrupt, if you will. We wanna make sure we do it right the first time, so we're doing a lot, and I'm learning a lot with that. And when I sent out their reports, uh, for September, it's hard to believe that we're already twenty-five percent down this school year. Well, no one is, no one's, no one's in any risk or anything, or.
We're in good shape with the budget. Particular first quarter of the budget. Wonder admin, we had a meet and greet today at Berwick Academy, we met with their management staff, the the director. President of Berwick Academy and the the admin finance guy. And maintenance facility guy. Um, really, really good staff meeting, uh, great, great service launch, they had one there. Um, and it was basically just, you know, uh, the director had been there for five years. And you know, the town management has changed, so they wanted to, to meet, greet, and there we agree that we're gonna do quarterly meetings. Um, and work together and certainly it was a great meeting, great success. Um, opening the door to working together with Berwick Academy that, you know, they wanna be included as being part of the community, not separate. And we wanna make sure that we're working together with them for the services they need, so that would be there. Uh, now the police chief and lieutenant, a police lieutenant, talk both the main curves options, their retirement options, see what's. Do what's best option going forward. Um, I'll be studying management leadership training for all the department heads in November, going through probably till. Later, and we're gonna tackle management topics, leadership topics, personnel and supervisory practices. None of the, none of the department heads have ever had any management leadership training. That becomes a red flag going forward. You know, we need to provide them the opportunity to, give them the tools and the toolbox to be successful, be good. So we'll be working on that. Route ninety-one, two thirty-six intersection works Saturday today, we'll be telephone poles and cutting trees and. Um, that'll be going through till probably, they said the first week in November. They did not give me a warm fuzzy feeling about utilities working after nine o'clock in the morning. He said, you know, that was, they were talking about pavers and the road construction people, but the engineers have control, they're not the utility. And all the public said, we originally said seven nine to you folks, but that doesn't appear that's gonna. Utilities people come out and do what they want when they want, that's pretty much what they say. And that, oh, and the fact that, uh, we've been very, very busy in the office, a lot of, a lot of moving pieces going on.
Thank you very much. Uh, we'll go to council member comments.
I went to Central School today, there were some lovely precares with their fire. Department hats on, and my son is very much looking forward to his, uh, fire department kind of field trip tomorrow. So I'm very much appreciative to the fire department for that committee outreach during fire prevention week. It's so important to chat with kiddos. About fire safety and and just having those conversations reverberate back to home, I've always heard it. Um, I, now the weather is changing, it's getting a little bit colder. Just wanted to check in with the, like, brick department and potential for, I think there are funds expended from the bond fund for, like, the ice shack. And it had been kind of put off, so I was hoping that we would be able to have a, some sort of facility. This winter, if at all possible, and to make sure that our rink is in good repair before we need it. Um, looking forward to the next comprehensive plan meeting in a few weeks. And then tomorrow was supposed to be a town and district meeting, uh, hosted by Elliot, but I have not heard if we'll be having that at this point. Um, so we'll look forward to the next one.
School. Yeah, I haven't, I has at this moment, I have not seen, checked my email, I didn't see anything, so. I don't, and Elliot didn't purchase pay last time, so I wouldn't.
And that's it for me.
Thank you. That time of year, check your smoke detectors, change your batteries. Something I do for, uh. For Thanksgiving, but. That's all I have.
Have one more comment. Um, I I'm appreciative of the new monthly journal that the town administrative staff has put together on our website, if you haven't seen it. Um, it's highlighted, and I'm sure it'll be continued to be highlighted under the the website revision. Um, just as councilor, so I was wondering if, you know, we would want to consider, um, drafting kind of news from the council. Or like just plugging, um, anything that we are doing here, any type of outreach. Um, you know, more communication is usually a good thing, so I wanted to throw that out to us.
I don't, I don't think we're limited. So if you, some topics of general interest or specific interest. And it's usually a good thing to say that, you know, that you're speaking for you. As for yourself and not the council, that that kind of thing, it's always a. Yeah, some people might misinterpret that, that it's.
You know, some some action by the council, so. One newsletter, that's what the newsletter is for, and it'll say from, it would say from the desk of the town council, so what I'm looking for is that. You would get together as a cloud of a group and say, you know, hey Jess, you wanna write something up and throw it at us on the twenty-fifth, and then we'll kind of approve that. And then we can put that in a newsletter as a, as a letter from the, you know, as a remark from the council or something like that. That's your choice, up to you how you wanna do that, if you wanna do something like it. If if not, you know, you see the newsletter, we're just trying to get more information out, get the town familiar with. Kind of some of the stuff we're doing, and some of the patent heads and so forth and so on, so. I just, how you guys wanna do that, certainly placing that for you.
Uh, just another, I have one other. As, you know, we were talking about downtown TIF and. Uh, many things that associated with that, the economic and community development. And I I would hope that whatever action is proposed. Recognize significant history and cultural importance of the built environment in the downtown.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, the historic district and the historic value of just preserving the downtown. Oh, absolutely, absolutely, the historic district and the historic value of just preserving the downtown district, absolutely.
Yeah, uh, and it's just a. We we haven't spoken to that specifically, but it, on the comprehensive plan committee, you know, we're coming up with uh. Historic and and cultural pieces of of the uh, of the plan. That's coming up on the twenty-sixth, and and so that just kind of jogged and and dovetailed that with the tip. It's an important piece for South Berwick and many people have worked out over the years. So I have. There you go.
Second.
I was a favor. You have to hear. We have to hear.